Good evening, welcome to the Market City Commission Meeting, Special Budget Meeting for April 17th, 2012. Could you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and never be unjust.
All right, City Clerk, could you please call roll?
This is your honor, Mayor Protam de Pietro.
Here.
Commissioner Nemi.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Commissioner Saint Ange.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivola.
Here.
All right, any agenda changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda, Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved.
Thank you, do we have support? Commissioner Snyder?
Support.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, I don't have any announcements, so we will move first to the public comment. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone wishing to comment?
I'm Eric Smith, I live at 1024 Aloei, and I just wanted to voice my support for the road construction work that you're considering in the budget for next year. The section in particular that we're interested in is the Aloei piece that runs from the eastern end of the road down to, I believe, West Nicolay. That, as you know, the Chira subdivision has a history of poor roads, and this isn't the only stretch, but this one in particular has some major issues. The infrastructure underneath is deteriorating, the road base is starting to dissolve away. Just last week, the city maintenance staff came out. A portion was undermined, you could see the pavement that was still in place, but underneath you could take a broom handle and there was no dirt underneath, so they came and did a repair. But the troubling part was that they couldn't tell, and I was there when they were doing the analysis, they were looking around a storm drain to see if they could determine where the dirt was going, and they couldn't see it. So somehow it's washing away, but it's not really clear where. So I think it just points to the need that's there. That road was poorly constructed to begin with, the asphalt's very thin, and in general terms, the patches that have been done are really all that's keeping that road in place. So to the extent that can be kept into the budget, we'd encourage that project to go forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we will move into new business. First item up, approve the minutes of the April 12th, 2012 Special Budget Commission Meeting. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I move to approve the minutes of the April 12th, 2012 Special Budget Commission Meeting.
Commissioner De Pietro supports. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, next up, number two, in the budget process, here we go, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Facility, so.
Thank you, your honor. Just quickly, before we ask Kurt to jump into that, I wanted to ask Gary Simpson to make you aware of a couple of different pieces of information we'd like to bring forward tonight.
Thank you, and hopefully everybody found at your seat. There were five different items that we're handing out tonight. And if I could, just run through each one real quickly. The first one will be a part of Kurt's presentation when we get to the Water Utility Fund. Number two, when we discuss the storm water budget, it's an email memo we received from the Superior Watershed Partnership requesting additional funding. Then, number three is, we're requesting to add in an addendum to the Technology Services Fee Schedule. So hopefully that will be added when you adopt the budget. And number four, the Brownfield Authority has revised their budget somewhat, so I've included those pages, and the DDA submitted their budget. And number four and five will be presented tomorrow night. So those were the things that we handed out for tonight, thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Goodman, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I'm here today to present three budgets. Fund 590, the wastewater treatment facility, the Water Fund 591, and Sewer Fund 592. Before I start, I acknowledge a couple of people that had a lot of input in putting together these budgets. Supervisor Tom Asmus for the wastewater plant, Scott Combenzi, Public Works Director, and Engineering Department Keith Whittington. First budget will be the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Facility, pages 237 and 239. And if you could, one page is out of place, the fee schedule, and that's on page 249. Okay, on page 238 is our fact sheet with the authorized positions, a little background on the flows. We do operate under NPDS permit. The facility is owned by Choclate Township, Marquette Township, and the city of Marquette. It's operated by the city of Marquette. Going to page 239, first talk a little bit about the revenues. Revenues are pretty much staying constant, status quo. We anticipate pretty even flows in revenue as previous years. One note on line item under 896, we have a bio-solid storage facility under revenue, and that'll be offset by debt and expenses. As for expenses, operations, again, the bottom line is pretty straight-lined. There's been a few changes within the line items, a little bit higher in repair cost, power, a little bit higher. But other than that, the bottom line is very similar to previous years. And on the administration portion of the expenses, once again, the difference is the bio-solid storage facility for $591,000.
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Don.
On the revenue, so the wastewater treatment revenue is tied to the water usage, right?
Yeah, correct. The first one, city of Marquette, the $2,565,000, that line item shows up as wastewater service is purchased under the sewer account.
But as far as how that's generated, it's related to the amount of water used?
For the city of Marquette, correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Does it work the same in the townships? Because I notice our water usage is down from Marquette Township.
Correct. We bill according to the flow that we actually get at the treatment facility, and then each of the two townships is billed accordingly with and the city, so.
So the townships are billed on, you can break out what is coming from the township?
Correct, actual flow. They're all metered separately.
Okay.
And.
What, you know, when it's staying about the same, let's say we're seeing some growth in the community, would we not expect to see some growth in the wastewater use?
We will, we've got plenty of capacity at the plant. Once again, the facility, each of township is billed for actual use. It's been pretty flat-lined, you know, for the flows over the last few years.
Bob?
Kurt, just to clarify, it's the inflow you measure from the city and the townships, correct?
We measure actually, you know.
Is that how you bill the plant expenses, is the inflow into the plant?
Correct.
Yeah, and we, as a city, gain our revenue, the sewage revenue is based on water consumption, but that has nothing to do with this fund.
Right, and we charge each of the township per unit rate based on the revenue and expenses. This is a, what do you call that?
Break-even.
Break-even operation.
Dave? Just a quick question, Kurt. Under revenue, are we, the bio-solids facility is, is that going to be part of a bond issue? Or it looks like it's coming from reserves, I guess. Just clarify for me where those proceeds are coming from.
That's our advisory board, Market Area Wastewater Advisory Board have discussed some financing options. One would be a possible SRF bond, another option would be a general revenue bond, another option would be to pay out of the current reserves in the wastewater treatment account, which we have enough to cover that expense.
So have you predetermined which way it's going to run, or is that ultimately up to whatever else gets funded through the budget process, and then you decide what account to go into? I see it's under reserves right now.
Yeah, it would be up to, I believe, you know, a recommendation will come from our advisory board, and then ultimately, you know, with, you know, direction from the commission, and lay out the options, the best financial, what makes financial sense.
What's the current value of the reserve account, do you know offhand roughly?
I believe it's $648,000.
$648?
Yeah, and another $191,000 is scheduled to go in July 1st. And once again, the three entities feel comfortable spending down that, you know, and basically paying cash for this project.
All for it. Thanks.
Don?
I'd like to just, I think I'm getting it straight, but I just want to make sure. And I'm not questioning you, I'm just trying to get this in my own head, so I know what I'm doing. The revenue, you know, the revenue that you, the charges you bill to the city may or may not be covered by revenue generated by the city, is that correct? In other words, you're charging on, as Commissioner Nemi asked, on what comes into the plant? And so you're charging each township and the city based on their usage?
Correct.
Whether or not the city generates that revenue is a separate question. That's like a bill we have to pay to the wastewater treatment.
Right, and that's under the 592 sewer account. You'll see a line item says purchase wastewater services for the exact amount on there.
Now, will we be talking about whether our wastewater treatment fees are covering that amount?
They do cover the amount. It's designed so that we set the rate, so that the revenue covers all the expenses.
That's what we try to do, yes.
We do that.
Bob?
Perhaps instead of going to water after this thing, maybe we ought to go to the 592 sewer account directly.
That would be fine.
All right, go ahead.
Turning to page 248. Oh, fee schedule, oop, thank you, Gary. One quick note on the fee schedule, that would be page 249. Halfway down, we formalized a new fee, and that's to, for groundwater discharged into a sanitary sewer. We've set up a formal process that allows us to accept any grant groundwater for a construction part or dewatering, and the fee is the per-unit price plus 25%. The .001895 was based on last year's per unit. The new fee would be .00194 per gallon, with a $200 minimum.
Kurt, how does that compare to, like, projects that were done this year? I mean, is it consistent with that, or is that an additional uptick to what has been done to date?
Anyone that discharges into the sanitary, we'll make sure that we're aware of it. It's not allowed without us, you know, going through a permit process. We have to do some testing of what is discharged to make sure it's allowed. It's a pretty detailed process. You know, our engineering department knows that if any dewatering goes through, that we need to make sure that we're made aware of, so that we can charge appropriately.
Sorry about missing that, on page 244.
To what?
On 244, then it'd be just past 5430001. That's on the left-hand side, towards the top. You got total?
Page 249?
244, 244.
In the water fund?
Under the water fund. The account number is?
We haven't done that one. We haven't done after the sewer fund.
Oh, okay, I thought I missed something there.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
They were wanting to skip to the sewer fund, then go back to the water.
Okay.
Right, that's correct. Any more questions on the fee schedule? Okay. Now turning to page 248, this is Fund 592, the sewer fund. Sewer funds consist of revenues, sewer operations, which would be the collection system, and our wastewater lift stations. That would be on page 250. Under revenue, that's revenue from the different customers, classification customers. That includes with the proposed 9% increase. Once again, the revenue rates are set to match the expenses.
You said a 9% increase?
Right. That was recommended through the letter of transmittal.
See that on a page somewhere, is that?
Page 250.
If I made the reference to the increase?
In the transmittal letter.
See it? The footnote?
I see, yeah.
Yeah, page six in the transmittal letter addresses it as well.
We know what a typical residential customer pays for monthly service.
It's on page six.
Page?
Page six in this book?
Yes, I could refer everybody to page.
You've got so many papers, you know, it's kind of hard.
Yeah, page six is the transmittal letter, and that's where we present, under enterprise funds. For each of the utilities we have, we presented what an average customer is paying versus what they will pay should these increases be approved.
And there is, yeah, and once again, under the note, under the revenue, recommend an increased 9% in sewer rates for fiscal year 13.
Why is the sewer higher than the others, is there a particular reason?
There's a.
The percentage increase.
Yep.
Sorry, I've been asking Kurt to kind of point this out. The original rate increase in fiscal year '09 was 25%, and it went to 20% in '10. It went to 22% in '11, 15% in '12. This actually marks the first time in the last four or five years where we've been able to contain the rate increase to a single-digit increase. And part of that is based on the availability of the funds. I wanted Kurt to maybe speak a little bit more of that.
Yeah, once again, as we do the budget process, you know, we look at all the expenses, and then we look at projection of flows and what they'll be, and then we try and, you know, make sure that the revenues match the expenses. We try and come up with a reasonable rate increase that covers costs to maintain the current services. A lot of the costs that is presented for expenses are some inflationary numbers, fringe benefits, some power. So there are some normal cost increases associated with the operation of a sewer system.
Part of this goes to capital outlay as well?
Correct. Yep, capital outlay is included in the rate increase.
Was there an issue where we felt that several years ago the sewer fund was not carrying its weight, and that's why we've had to increase it rather significantly over the last several years?
And in 2006 or '07, when we were in the process of planning the wastewater treatment upgrade, we recommended a three-year step increase to cover those costs, and then with the additional infrastructure projects, and also, you know, continue to improve the infrastructure, those rates need to be adjusted accordingly.
And this year, this probably includes almost $2 million in capital outlay, is that?
About 1.3 million.
Yes, closer to 2 billion, okay.
So Kurt, just so that if we approve this 9% increase, that would be $3.59 per month to the average customer?
Correct.
So I just want to let the residents know that if this is approved, that's what it would cost, $3.59. That's just to stay even, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave?
Kurt, is it safe for me to presume that any differential between, you know, rates charged to the average customer and any savings you have from operations and capital outlay and whatnot, does that money go to the reserve account, then?
No, a reserve account is a set line item by intergovernment agreement, and also it states through our SRF bonding program, we're required to put X amount of dollars in a reserve fund.
So how would, I'm back on the bio-solids, just so I understand how that fund gets its money. Where does it come from? It doesn't come from heaven, it's got to come from somewhere. So if you pull $591,000 out for the bio-solids facility, you're at $648, plus another buck ninety-one, how much do you have to keep in there each year? What's your statutory threshold that you have to have?
The advisory board has gone sort of a plan to, if we reach a million dollars, we would then evaluate how much more to put in, that's a goal. However, it's set, it's sort of set by the two townships and the city. We, you know, we chose $191,000 to, you know, keep the reserve at a decent amount.
So where does that money come from, though, that goes in the reserves?
It comes from, it's 85% is paid out of the budget from the city, 15% from the, 10% from Marquette Township, and 5%.
So am I to assume, then, that the July 1 deposit of $191,000 would come from the approval of this budget?
Correct.
I see. I'm starting to pull all the pieces together, trying to, I'm starting to figure out how you guys actually work. It's scary. Thanks.
Bob?
Just a question, the 1.3 million proceeds of bonds, that's actually for projects that we approved in last year's budget?
No, that's for, capital projects for this year's budget. Now, we have yet to issue the bonds for the current year, the FY '11, but this is the budget amount for the FY '13 projects.
I thought we were just, you know, we're always, you know, kind of one year off because of fiscal year.
Well, we are, cycle-wise, we're actually running about it, not exactly a year behind, because, like I said, we're just now getting ready to go into the process of issuing the FY '12 bonds, so it doesn't exactly coincide, so it can get a little confusing, so.
Okay, go ahead. Go on, yeah.
Moving on to, if there's no other questions on the sewer fund, moving on to page 242, that would be the water fund. On page 242, a fact sheet for a water filtration plant. Basically gives the authorized position, positions, and program statistics of the flow that's been treated. Fee schedule on 243, we're maintaining the current fees.
Bob?
Kurt, you know, we're raising the rates for the users, and there's very little increase in any of your fees. Why is that?
That's a very good question. About four years ago, mostly for the water plant, the fees that we charge, we provide a service to do bacterial analysis for residents, contractors. I raised them from $12 to $20 in the last, I think, over four years. Issuring provides the same service for $12. I think it's a, it covers our cost, it does provide income. And we do about 876 of these tests a day, a year. Right, and we also provide a pretty much 24/7 service. The state, last year, closed their lab up in Houghton, so we've been getting a lot more samples. And starting with the operating revenue, once again, referring to the trend. referring to the trend and the billable flows, we've seen about a fifteen percent decrease since two thousand and seven. Gary handed out a, I put together a quick snapshot of the ten largest users. What I did is I, I went back to two thousand and six and if you look at the water supply volume and you look at Northern at a hundred forty-seven thousand cubic feet in two thousand and eleven, it's a hundred two. That represents about a forty-three percent decrease. So the trend does come out to be about fifteen percent since, over the last few years. Water conservation definitely is a, plays a factor in that.
Fred?
Just going to remark that we're sitting here next to the largest freshwater lake in the world worrying about water conservation in a zero-sum gain system. In other words, whatever we bring out, we put right back in again. There's no loss of water volume, there's no loss of water quality. And we have institutions in town that are worried about water conservation. Now, in the city of Marquette, that makes absolutely no sense.
Well, in-
We don't lose any water is what I'm trying to say, Commissioner, you know, Schneider, we don't lose it. We take it from the lake, we use it, we return it. If you were sitting in the middle of the Arizona desert, you could argue, yes, the water is disappearing and going away and the water tables are dropping. They're not here. So you kinda look and say, why am I going to Northern and looking at, at waterless toilets, for example? Sense, other than obviously they're saving money on the production of the water cost, but whatever, I'm random-
Well, you know, you, you wonder about the saving money on the cost of water because we're faced here having to raise the water rates because we're not selling the volume of water to cover our fixed costs, so. Chasing our tail, so. Commissioner Ryan?
That was just the same point I was gonna make. Just, just from a pure economic point of view, water conservation is not beneficial to the operation of our system.
Right. Yeah, and that's common throughout the, you know, the United States.
And in fact, maybe a fallacy in the sense that we have to continue much of the, you know, we're not paying for the water, we're paying for treating the water and we're paying for the distribution system. And we have to continue to pay for that. So if consumption goes down, we have to increase rates to maintain the distribution system.
Correct.
If consumption were going up, we might be able to reduce rates hypothetically.
Correct, yeah.
Just, just so that point is made.
One thing I'll point out too, that this is, once again, with, this is a flatline budget. Increases, you know, a lot of it has, with the capital outlay projects.
Commissioner St. Ange?
Thank you, Your Honor. What's interesting, when you look at the list of the ten, I put my economic developer hat on. Six of the ten are public entities, nonprofits. Only four are taxpayers per se. Now granted, they all pay for their use, but if you look at it in a broader context, it's the government living off the government. I find that interesting.
Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. In our water rates, we have a differential rate between non-tax and all others. But in our sewer rates, we don't. Why not? Seems to me like we ought to, especially when you look at the, the way they're, the, the big non-tax users are, are reducing their use, perhaps we ought to raise their, their sewer rates a little more.
Are you gonna exercise your Fifth Amendment rights and not answer that question?
But I mean, I don't, I don't know if you set the rates, Kurt, or if you do in conjunction with Gary or who-
You know, there's been a lot of talk about how to set rates. Those are some ideas. We can definitely take a look at it.
Cause since I've been here, we've raised water rates eighty percent since two thousand and eight and yeah, it's a-
Definitely worthwhile looking at-
You know, I can see where, you know, part of it is, is, is is the, the conservation, part of it is, is our, our, our fixed costs in the, the system and then, and the the infrastructure things, but when I was looking at the, at the rates, the, you know, the, the institutional rates are, are the same as the residential rates in sewer, it seems to me like. And I would think that they probably provide more to the plant than certainly the residences do, but I don't know.
You know, the top ten users in two thousand and six were about forty percent of the revenue and currently it's about thirty point, thirty-one point eight percent.
Maybe we should, you know, raise the residential rates six percent and, and the institutional rates nine or ten percent.
Okay, definitely look at it.
All right, why don't we move on?
Any further questions on the water fund?
I don't think so. Maybe.
I just wanna ask now, just so that customers will realize that beginning July first, twenty thirteen, the rates will be going up a total of four dollars and ninety-four cents for the combination water sewer. Is that correct? Cause I know water billing's gonna probably be getting a lot of calls from customers.
Yeah, four ninety-four.
Four ninety-four is what the residents will be paying starting July first, twenty thirteen.
For water and sewer?
Right.
If you add stormwater to that, it'd be five twenty-three total.
Five twenty-three total? Okay, cause I'm sure we'll hear about this, but I know it's a staying even type thing, it's not like we're making money off of it. And this is probably the lowest rate increase in quite a while, but I just want the public to know that that's why we're doing this, cause of increase in supplies and demand and stuff like that. Right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan? I'd like to kind of follow up in a sense of what Commissioner Neme said in that maybe we do have to relook at, you know, how we do some of these charges. And going way back to the beginning, the wastewater treatment fund simply bills the city for its share and the city has to come up with that money to, to pay it. So, you know, they're gonna be, they're, they're gonna be fine because they're, they're gonna collect whatever they need. Within our system, we have to collect enough money then to pay those charges and, and the other charges. But water and sewer are connected, as, as, as I think Commissioner Neme was pointing out, and maybe we have to look at that to, especially with some institutional users and, and, and other special situations so that we get the money we need to maintain the system, yet we're as equitable as we can be with the users in the community.
Yeah. I have done a little bit of research on that. I know a lot of these hearings I, or presentations, I try and give you a comparison to other communities. I believe are firmly within the middle of the pack. In talking to other communities, when I look at their rate structure, every community does it different. Some communities have a, a flat rate of like twenty-five dollars and a, you know, a, a lower rate, so there's a lot of different ways, there's a lot of options out there. I don't think we've had a formal rate study in a while, but I think definitely there are ways to try and maximize the you know, the, the revenue a little bit.
Well, and I would just add in fairness to you, I, I think we've also worked very hard in the last several years to deal with some of the infrastructure situations. You know, we've, we've been out there fairly aggressively trying to get rid of some of those old pipes in the ground and I think we're probably doing a better job than some communities when it comes to that.
Lot better.
Bob?
Do I understand correctly, Kurt, they, like, for instance, you've got two point five million nominally budgeted for, for our consumption at the, the sewage plant. As these, you know, users, if you look at the list where they're, they've decreased, less goes in the plant, you might not realize that two point five million, we might not have to pay the full two point five million, correct? Cause it is based on use, it's not just based on the, the budgeted amounts.
Correct. Yep, actual use.
But, but costs don't necessarily go down proportionally, do they?
Oh, no.
In the end, we have to wind up paying whatever our share is.
Correct.
Yep. So. Okay. Any other questions on water? All right. Stormwater next, Kurt?
As Keith will do stormwater.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
First of all, does everybody have the correct stormwater page, two thirty-five? I handed out on, if you looked at the original budget book, page two thirty-five had a incorrect entire different fund in it and I handed out the correct page, two thirty-five. Does everybody have that? Last Tuesday, Wednesday, last Wednesday. I do have extra copies if you don't have it. That's why I was just asking, so.
I've got mine. You have it done?
Gary, may I get a copy?
All right, thanks Keith.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is our usual stormwater utility fund that we go through every year. We do have on staff one hydrology engineer, which is Mr. Compton. As part of the fund, the Public Works Superintendent does receive some of his funding through this account. And there is some funding for the administrative assistants that come out of this account related to stormwater. I'll let you look for the program statistics there, but as you can see, we year by year, we try to at least get some storm sewer replaced or extended. Actually, last year, twenty eleven, we were kind of a, I guess you could not, won't say slowed down, but a little bit less than in the past years. General customers is, kinda goes up and down, but it's fairly, fairly straightforward there. Not a whole lot of change. Revenues wise, they are different. There is a general residential fee, that's just a flat fee for residents. When you get into industrial uses, commercial uses, it's actually based upon the, the area of impervious, impervious materials that are on the site and those are, that's what part of Jim Compton's job is, is to figure out those areas so they can be built appropriately. Anything on the revenues part of it?
Nope.
My glasses here so I can see. Fund expenses, of course, there's an engineering part that does come out of it. I figure that out based upon what percentage of engineering department actually sets aside as far as working on stormwater-related topics or issues. I actually have that broken down for every fund that you guys have gone over tonight. You can see our capital outlay, if approved, is six hundred and seventy-six thousand and that was based upon past meetings with the list that was given to you for priorities. Routine maintenance, that's handled by Scott Benz in the Public Works Department. Administration-wise, what you see there is basically what Jim Compton's account is, his salary. As far as supplies and all that, it's, it's flat. We haven't raised any of that. I guess I'm open for any questions you may have.
Dave?
Professional and contractual, seventy-five thousand. What, what is that again? Up in the fund expenses?
That's construction-related.
Construction-related?
Yep.
So what, this is, what would that be then? Give me an example. Is that like somebody doing surveying for us or is that, do you know what that is offhand?
That, what that is, is I think, well, actually, what is that doing up there? You know what, I'm gonna have to look into that, cause I'm not for sure why that's sitting up there. I'll have to look into that for you, Commissioner.
I wanted to point out too, before we do leave the stormwater fund, that as part of tonight's handout, the second handout was a request from the Superior Watershed Partnership. Normally they have been getting twenty thousand dollars per year for contribution and this year they're requesting an additional five thousand dollars. So I just, I wanted to present to you exactly what they were saying as to why they want the extra five thousand dollars, so.
Okay. Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, has the SWP provided any more detail than what they had sent?
This is all I had. I, I would have presented anything that they sent, but this is what I had, so.
We wanted to make sure we faithfully present things people are asking us to put before you. In this case, it's not a recommendation. We're presenting it.
Commissioner Neme?
This is kind of just a glad, happy question, I guess, but we've got a Public Works Superintendent, ten percent and administrative, ten percent, and I don't see where it's in the salaries and wages in the budget. If you look at administration, you'll see Jim's stands out there pretty conspicuously, but I don't see unless, unless that's buried in maintenance.
I, that's, that's buried in maintenance, yes.
Okay, I see, cause Public Works does the maintenance.
It's maintenance related, yes.
Anything else on storm sewers? On the Superior Watershed Partnership, unlike some of the other contributions we make, that, that actually comes out of this fund, right? So it's related to activity they perform related to our storm sewers?
That's correct, yes.
Or impact on Lake Superior?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner St. Ange?
I'll ask the obvious question then. Where's that twenty-five thousand dollars gonna come from, since your budget is currently balanced? Unless there's some slop in there somewhere, where does, where does it come from?
Well, twenty thousand is already budgeted, so the extra five thousand would, though the budget out of balance, balances, it's currently presented.
Which one?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what that is?
Yeah. So they currently get twenty thousand, they're requesting twenty-five in total. Yeah. But it is balanced with twenty thousand, so what we're saying is with the additional five, it throws it out of balance at that point, so.
Can we pull it out of professional and contractual?
Since we don't know where it's going?
Since we don't know where it's going.
It's like there could be a possibility for that.
Commissioner Neme?
The, this last year, just not long ago, we approved the grant, the coastal management. Doesn't a good chunk of that go to the SWP? Phase one and phase two and, and I think, you know, they do great work. I, I really like the SWP, but I don't know, I guess I just can't support an additional five thousand for, for them. We give them twenty thousand, which I think is certainly great, but you know, most of the grants that we do in conjunction with them, they're getting the lion's share of the actual cash and we're providing the in-kind support and so what we're doing is we're kind of the, the levering agency for the SWP and I, I wouldn't support the additional five thousand. And so what we're doing is we're kind of the, the levering agency for the SWP, and I, I wouldn't support the additional five thousand.
Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would support the additional five. I think the value we get out of the partnership or out of the, again, the Lake Superior, it's just remarkable. And the amount of money they've leveraged for the city over the years and the work they've done. While I certainly would like to know where the additional five thousand is going, I think if we can find it and squeeze it out of the contractual and professional, I think it's a good deal. I think the city makes, makes out very well with it, and I would ask us to take a very good look at how we can do that.
Go ahead.
I also, I see where they say the workload for a city initiative had increased dramatically over the last several years. That's why they're requesting an increase of five thousand dollars. But could you have the executive director of the SWP get back to us with the reason why he's asking five thousand dollars? Just for us to justify it?
We'd be glad to do that. Actually, we don't disagree with anything the, the commission is saying. We think there might be a better way to find financing based on the actual contributions of the SWP. They get not only the cash grants from the city, but they get a very great lease arrangement for the facilities out on Presque Isle in addition to other kind of in-kind match that the city staff provides when we go after mutual kind of pursuits. And we've had some discussions about alternative ways where we can finance them, where instead of kind of giving them this grant, irrespective of what their true costs are for providing, providing the support to the city or partnering with the city on things, we can actually find some kind of not-to-exceed way to make funding available to them. But certainly, we can relay your request, and we'll ask the executive director to come in and, and explain what he's looking for.
Okay. I would suggest that we bring this up again tomorrow. Tomorrow night's wrap-up afterwards. We've got a number of issues to come up, and that's usually where we kind of do a thumbs up, thumbs down. Commissioner Ryan?
I was just gonna say, in the name of transparency, we should probably discuss the fact that we inadvertently paid them forty thousand this year. Because there was an assumption we were making a contribution plus giving them the contribution from the, from this stormwater fund.
Actually, the extra twenty thousand is considered a prepayment for the FY thirteen budget.
I know that, but it wasn't when it was made. I don't believe.
No, correct, but that is.
And so I'm, what I'm saying is, I think they felt they had more to work with last year, this year, however, we're looking at these years.
Oh, and that's possible.
And maybe this five thousand is some way to try to keep the programs going that they would have normally kept going if that had not happened.
Okay.
It's more confusing than I wanted it to be, but.
Yeah. Thanks for clearing that up.
Yeah. But it did happen.
It did. It did, so. Okay. We'll bring this up again tomorrow night when we wrap up. Anything else on storm, stormwater? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Cambenzi.
Thank you. I hope I'm not here all night, but.
All right. Should we start with the Public Works budget, page ninety-eight through one oh two?
Mayor and City Commission, just a few quick comments if I could before starting, and hopefully they'll answer some questions along the way. We talked, or you talked when Mr. Zuger was up here about the employees coming over from Lakeview Arena. Just to clarify, we're not adding any new employees actually to the Public Works operation. Those two bodies are coming over to fill two vacancies, and we're gonna move forward as is with the number we have. So hopefully, that answers some questions. Looking at the fee schedule, I'm gonna try not to address the fee schedules individually. I'm gonna make a general comment right now, and that is that I have not changed any of the fees for any of the departments that we'll be going through, with the exception of the residential solid waste fee has increased by twenty-five cents. And that is a contractual increase with our solid waste hauler. So that bill will be going from thirteen fifty-five to thirteen eighty a month. Looking at the Public Works budget on page ninety-eight, just a couple of things that stand out with the income. The first number, the hundred and fifty thousand, and the last number, the thirty thousand, those are part of the, the two grant projects at, at Williams Park and McCarty's Cove. That would be the first one, money coming in in the form of grant money, if that comes out. And the latter being in-kind services, which were part of that proposal. Going down the list there to the, the middle one, the six four two, the only point of interest there is the actual amount of money we're getting out of, out of scrap metal being turned in is, is really increased in the last few years. And it's, it's, prices are still quite high. Maybe just.
Scott, is most of that scrap metal from the, the household rubbish pickup? Or I'm sure you have, you know, plow blades and, or, you know?
The plow blades and the internal items are actually, you'll see it when we discuss the motor pool.
Okay.
You'll see a line item for that. The, the other is, is somewhat from the rubbish drop-off. Some of it comes from tires and other scrap metal we, we pick up around town. Certainly, if, if we're called out and we need to remove rubbish from a area or a park that's been unfortunately left behind, if it's scrap metal, we will put it in the scrap to try to get whatever value we can out of it.
Okay.
Moving along, looking at the authorized positions, I'll skip down to the, the bottom portion of that page. And, and if you look at Superintendent of Public Works, there's several different accounts that that is, is charged out to. And what you see on those, some of them are referred to fixed charges, some are referred to administration. But when you talked about the stormwater, that's where that fee would have come in. If you look further down, it's under the administration. Looking at the budget itself for Public Works, if you look at the professional contractual, you've got a fairly major increase there, but that includes the project for restoration and sealing of the projects for the buildings out at the island, Presque Isle. The parking administration at the DDA, that number is the, the proposed as we start to change over and phase out some things with the DDA. One increase that Kurt touched upon there is the, the power increase with the surcharges that have been accreted with the, included with the energy charge. Looking at that, that's a fairly substantial increase that we're planning for. Other than that, all of the numbers going down there are just, for the other utilities, are just the modest percent increases proposed. And then if you look at the nine seven two, those are the grant projects that we had talked about. So the difference there is a total of twenty thousand dollars between what's proposed for income and what the actual charge is.
Yep.
Questions on that?
Scott, I've seen this not just in your budget, but other budgets, the, the power charge. What's the, what's the backstory to that that I'm not aware of? I mean, why such an increase? Is, is there a rate case that's been approved that hasn't found its way out into the marketplace yet? Or what's the status?
If, if you even look at your, your home bill, there's, there's a fuel surcharge they've been tacking onto them. I don't understand that. Kurt's been in contact with them. I think they started appearing, I wanna say, back in around the November bill. And basically, that's what it's amounting to, is about a fifteen percent overall increase in the bill. It's not a demand charge, it's a energy surcharge. Kurt is looking into it, trying to find a better answer than that or more.
I'm assuming that, as seems to be the customary practice, we are conservatively overestimating what that, what that line item will actually be from an expense standpoint? So we're making sure we have enough.
We're hoping so, but, you know, we were told fifteen percent, and that's about what they're coming in at.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions, this budget? All right. Next up, sidewalks.
Page one oh, one oh four and one oh five are the sidewalks. Nothing really noteworthy on the fact sheet. Looking at the actual budget for it, the only thing to point out really is maybe the capital portion of it. The, the rest of it is pretty close to status quo. For the capital portion, there's a hundred thousand dollar in there for sidewalk replacement. And that is a, the contracted portion that's been done for the past few years through the Engineering Department. And then there's eighty-seven thousand dollars in there that's part of the proposed reconstruction projects that are on the table right now.
Scott, one question. We've been staying at a hundred thousand dollars for the sidewalk replacement. Are we still getting the same length of sidewalks accomplished?
They've actually varied a bit depending on the bids that have come in. Keith could probably have spoken more to that, but what you've seen is some years, you've seen very good rates on it. And I, I think the, the rates have, have been lower in the last couple of years now. But there is, you know, like with any other construction project, a variation in the amount of work that's done based on the prices that come in from, from the contractor. But each year, it's been proposed to do approximately the same amount. And eventually, kind of get to the point where once we're caught up, maybe the number that's, that's needed for that, that portion of the budget every year would be a lesser amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Bob?
Kind of related to that, Scott, you know, I know if you're looking in nine, ten, we were, you know, really below the hundred thousand. When we're way below like that, is it possible to add on sidewalks? Or is it from a practical standpoint, you, you survey the sidewalks in a year, you have the, the, the set of sidewalks set for the, the contractor? When the bids come in low, you, you really don't have an opportunity to, to add on additional sidewalks? You don't have it waiting in the wings or?
You do.
Keith could answer that.
So you do have the ability to add on to some of that, up, up to twenty-five percent without really changing the contract?
Oh, I see.
If you would.
Have we gotten, have we added twenty-five percent then on to those, those years when we've had really great bids or?
It's varied per year. The last couple of years, it's kind of been an anomaly, I guess you could say. You have contractors that get involved that, they basically get into not knowing exactly what they're getting into. So when it's all said and done, they might break even, but they're usually not interested in having a whole lot added on to it because they're not really making the money that they're going to. That's happened the last couple of years. Usually, when that does happen, the year after that, you'll probably see a, a better cost. I guess comparison of what actually is gonna cost, which would be closer to the hundred thousand versus the fifty or whatever you see on there just because of, they found out it wasn't as easy as it was gonna be, so.
And it doesn't make sense asking a contractor who's not doing real well on the project to start to, to add on more? He's not going to necessarily do it as well as you'd like.
We ask, but like I said, if they're, if it's not really making money for them, they're not really interested.
Keith, while we got you here, the sidewalks, and this is going back a few years, in front of the Ramada, when we did the Washington Street project, any recourse with whoever did those? Because they started chipping up in, is it called spalling? I mean, they're horrible.
Yep. It's not a, aesthetically, it's not a very pleasing situation. Stretchingly, they're probably fine. I guess I can't answer that a whole lot. I probably have to look at Ron Keefe over there to get his opinion of it, but, not to drag him in, but it was complicated.
As a note, I guess I'd like some background because, you know, we, we paid a contractor good money to put in what became a poor, you know, result. So I think we deserve an answer to that. Not, not necessarily tonight or, or in the near future, but I'd like to have some follow-up on it. I, I get asked about it a lot.
I don't blame you getting asked either. It's, it's not pretty.
Anything else on sidewalks? Okay. Thanks, Keith.
Page one sixteen is City Hall. The income you see there is just simply for gym rental. Looking at page one eighteen, which is the actual budget, I, I would point out that through a new contract for floor mats and that we were able to save a substantial amount of money in the seven forty operating supplies. And then looking at eight oh one, that number is lower too. And the reason that's lower is that was a one-time cost that was added in before for sealing and striping the, the parking lots. And other than that, really, you're just looking at the, the utility increases that we've been talking about.
Questions? Don't see any.
Okay. Page one twenty is the Park Cemetery. Nothing overly noteworthy on the fact sheet. Just pointing out maybe the, the columbarium sales up in the previous year. And it, it sounds like Paul has been able to sell a few more of those this year, so. That is looking good. Looking at the actual budget on page one twenty-three, the only really noteworthy item there, other than, you know, maybe looking at the utilities, is the capital outlay for the columbarium is the last line item there.
Questions here?
We move to page one forty-four, Major Streets. Nothing overly noteworthy on the, the fact sheet. As we're moving down and looking at the routine maintenance, this, this one does have a, probably a noteworthy discussion about halfway down there. If you look at the professional contractual, right now, and I, I think in the past years, especially during the capital outlay time, we've had a few discussions regarding the, the painting program for the, the traffic markings. And, you know, a couple of And, you know, a couple of years ago, we came and we said, you know, it's going to be a substantial reinvestment in the equipment. You know, in the past couple of years now that we've taken over with the jurisdictional transfer, Washington Street, that's added a great deal of painting to the amount that's done every year. Looking at some of the safety items that have been added in, lots of positive comments regarding the ladder bar crossings as opposed to the parallel lines, especially in the downtown areas. They come with a cost, unfortunately. But what we've run into now is without, A, allocating a fair amount in capital outlay for equipment, and B, probably adding a couple of personnel and really throwing a lot of the human resources to get it done, we're not able to get that project done anymore in the amount of time that we'd like to get it done. Certainly, you've noticed that it's taken us probably from the beginning of the summer to the end of the summer to get the markings down, and, you know, if we get a thaw around Christmas time, or certainly at the spring thaw, a good portion of those are gone. The current equipment and even the past equipment was set up for regular dry paint or waterborne paint, and what we're looking at doing now is going to an epoxy paint, where we're hoping to get two to three years or even more, in some situations, out of that paint. If you look at Third Street, Third Street's an excellent example, there's a few areas that are wear areas on there, but the portion of that that was overlaid last summer, it still looks like pretty fresh paint in most of those areas. That was done with epoxy paint. We're hoping to get, like I say, two to three or even more years out of a lot of those markings on those roads. So yes, it is an increased cost right now. There's part of that cost that's switching over to the epoxy from some of the, either the cold overlay or the hot inlay that were put down before. Those have to be ground out before they're repainted, so there is some additional cost there. But in addition to that, as we're getting going and we're switching to this epoxy system, you've got more work now than what we foresee once you spread it out over what we're hoping is a three-year cycle. So in the future, we're looking for that number to go down substantially. If you look at the note that's underneath there on 463, the number that's there is actually incorrect for the number that's in the budget. With the bridge repair note that was added there, the centerline painting portion should be 118, 170. To get it, we're on page 146, and we're looking at the 202, 463 section there, the routine maintenance. And what that did is, if you look at the Prince Charming list, I believe is what it was being referred to, that's, remember what page that's on? It's at the beginning of the budget book there, in the transmittal. There's $86,000.
It's page nine.
Page nine it's on. $86,830 that's on that Prince Charming list. So the grand total for doing the painting this year of what's proposed, or hopefully proposed, is $205,000, which is somewhat staggering, I guess, but in the long run, I think it's going to be not only cost beneficial, but it's certainly going to help out with the visibility, and you're actually going to be able to see the lines come spring, as opposed to having a black slate out there, I guess, which is what it looks like most springs.
You know, I hear the same thing I think a lot of commissioners do, is that we don't seem to get around to painting the lines on the streets until fall, and then they're gone by spring, you know? And I understand that this budget is for July 1, but is there any way to get a jump on that and get those major areas done early in the year versus late?
Well, what we've proposed here, and we've done it with some projects in the past, is actually to get a jump in the previous year, once you would approve this actual budget. And it takes a little bit of work on Gary's part, but we've been able to accomplish that.
Basically borrowing from next year to do it this year.
The city manager has just noted that the actual RFP for this is on the street right now, and I expect it back in a couple of weeks.
Great.
So that was the intent, if at all possible, to have it done before the 4th of July, if we could.
Perfect.
Scott, one of the things you want to do is complete the spring cleanup first, as far as brushing the sand off right away.
Yeah, there's certainly a couple of things going on there that play timing-wise as to when you can actually get started. One is certainly getting the streets clean and all that work accomplished beforehand. But on top of that, until you get into May, usually, you're not into real good painting weather, because there's still moisture on the road, you're still getting cold temperatures from time to time. I know they've done it earlier in the season, and they've done it late in the season, I'm just not sure if the product is quite what you want it to be.
So would you have your crew starting early in the mornings, like 4 o'clock, or?
With the RFP that's out there, there's items in there to keep them out of the high-traffic areas during the rush hour times and that. Certainly, if you're on the local streets or out of the way, it really doesn't matter what hour they're there. But yes, there are items in there to keep them off, say, an intersection like McClellan and Washington during rush hour.
I know, like, in the past, it's probably been easier for the paint crew to do it at the major intersections in the mornings, early in the mornings before the motorist starts coming through.
In the past, a lot of those major intersections, we would actually bring them in at night. Like I said, that's been very weather-dependent. You know, certainly, if you've got rain coming or something like that, you can't do it, and if you've got a night where there's heavy dew on the road or something, you can't really do it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
You're talking here about farming this out, right?
Correct.
This is not an in-house job.
Correct.
So somebody would come in and do this in a couple of weeks or whatever?
You know, like I said, it varies with the weather and that, but we're expecting by the time this would come in, you would approve the budget, we'd get the proposal to you for the award, and at your next meeting following that, and have them start right away and hopefully get it done before the 4th of July.
Anything else?
Just a couple of quick ones. Looking at the routine preservation of county streets, and I'm just going to add a couple of notes so that you know what they are a little bit better. That is Wright Street from the city limit out to 41. And basically, what we have there is just a situation where at the city limit, there's not a good place for us to turn around, there's not a good place for the county to turn around, and since we've got the majority of Wright Street, that's the agreement we came to with the county, and we just work basically under the same agreement that the county works with the state, and we work with the state, and we are reimbursed for all those services. And then, the same thing, if you look at the Business Route, McClellan, that is the state route that we have taken over since the jurisdictional transfer for Washington Street, and services on that stretch are reimbursed as well. And just real quickly, one thing to point out on that particular one, the 202, 504, the power there, all that's going to zero, and all that is, is that used to be a pass-through. Essentially, we'd get billed, and we'd turn around and build a state for it. Now, they're just billing the state directly for that. And that's about it for 202.
Okay, 203, local streets.
Local streets starts on page 150. Looking at that, nothing really to note on the fact sheet. And looking at the budget itself, there's nothing I really have to note, other than a modest increase for repair and maintenance under the routine maintenance, simply because of items such as what the gentleman came in and talked about in Shyras Hills, where he might have to do a couple of skim coats in certain areas to hold the road together, actually. And then, in addition to that, we've had a real good working relationship now with Delta County as far as getting the emulsion product that we used to use for the Wildcat to go out, and that was the machine, if you've seen it out there, it blows the crack out, and then it blows the emulsion into the crack, and then puts the stone chip seal over the top of it. That's a operation, I guess, that we do that we really do feel we get a good bang for the buck, and helps preserve the roads, especially with the centerline seam on the road opening up, that's a good way to keep that from getting any worse than it is.
Speaking of skim coating, like in Shyras Hills, did you ever put the 500 block of West College on your radar?
The 500 block?
From Seventh Street to the MGH crossover, that catwalk?
As far as skim coating that?
Right.
You know, basically, that section of road is to the point where it's not totally falling apart, but there's several patches and that in there. You know, certainly, that's something we would run the Wildcat up and down to try to keep it together, but that's a road that's to the point of need of reconstruction.
It's rated about a 1 at this time? Thank you, Keith. But that's where I get a lot of the complaints from, because it's a very heavy traffic area, and it's probably about a 500-foot stretch of that even, from Seventh going east to the cut across.
Yeah, you know, the maintenance that we're able to do on that is basically to try to hold it together from getting worse, and, you know, fill any holes with CP7 or pothole any material that we can. Certainly, doing much more than that at this point, short of the reconstruction, you're kind of throwing your money away.
Okay, thank you.
Moving to page 156, the sanitation fund. Really, there's nothing to comment on this one, really. This is a fund that's money in, money out, as far as it balances on a yearly basis. There is the one wild card out there of how much contractors direct haul to the landfill, but again, that's simply pass-through money, money coming in and money going back out Municipal Service Center is on page 266. Really, nothing to note on the fact sheet. And looking at the budget itself, I think we're in pretty good shape as far as staying fairly constant budget-wise, no major increases. If you look at the professional contractual, that again went down for parking lot sealing. You've got some increases in the utility rates, and then, if you look at the capital outlay portion for that, for FY12, or for FY13, what's being proposed is a door replacement at $50,000, or $15,000, and a sewer lift station rebuild for $18,000, and that's the total of $33,000 that's proposed there.
Dave?
Scott, just a kind of a broad-based question, the retention pond on...
On Baraga there?
On Baraga.
Just east of the service center?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the closest technical term definition I can give it is ginormous, and it seems like it's, you know, functionally overdesigned. I mean, there's a lot of capacity there. Have we ever been to the point where that's been needed? And it just seems to me like a tremendous amount of reserved space for stormwater retention that, in all my years I've been by there, it's hardly been wet.
If you get a good gully washer, certainly in the, the storm comes quick, it does fill up a fair amount, but, you know, as far as filling up even near the top, I've never seen that.
Have you ever seen the entire bottom full of water?
Yes.
Have you? Okay, I've never seen the whole thing full of water.
Yep.
All right, that's just an observation, I was just curious.
It's, interestingly enough, it's almost turned into a dog-walking park, has kind of been the secondary use of it.
Scott, on page 267, there's a note, I don't quite understand, the 15,000 square-foot cold storage warehouse was completed behind the Municipal Service Center, and then it says the project is estimated at $690. If we completed, it seems like we ought to know what the project was. It just threw me off, and it says "estimated."
It shouldn't say "estimated," that's the cost.
That was the project, okay.
Any other questions there? Now, we'll move on to motor tool.
Page 270. Didn't have anything noteworthy on the fact sheet. The one major change, I guess, that you see on there is the fuel. We do sell fuel, as was noted earlier, to Amcab, the school district, and ourselves, along with a few other government agencies. And all that is now wrapped into this budget. Previously, it was treated with separate accounts. So the fuel, if you notice that, that's gone up quite a bit, for other reasons too, as well, with the increase in cost. But operating supplies, line item 740, has gone down quite a bit. That was raised for a few small equipment purchases. Repair and maintenance, the only increase there was for the rebuild of the roll-off truck, which we talked about during capital outlay. And other than that, most things are pretty consistent.
How's our fuel tank?
Our fuel?
At the Municipal Service Center, yeah.
We're in good shape now. Part of what that fuel surcharge goes towards is eventually budgeting for that replacement. It does have the leak detection system on it, so we've been in good shape. No repairs to the tank itself, we've had some electronic issues with it, and those have been repaired or parts replaced, as far as that goes. We've had, last year, we put an emergency stop cutoff switch on it.
No other warnings, though? I mean, as far as we know, it's functionally sound, it's operating as designed?
Correct.
Commissioner Neme?
What is the transfers out of $936,690? Is that for bonds, or?
No, that's a...
No, that's because we reached the level of funding that we needed for the reserve fund, that's just the motor pool in effect issuing rebates to the other departments for their share of the motor pool charges.
Yeah, okay.
So we charge the full rate to each department still, but at the end of the year, we rebate back, you know, their portion. So the net effect is the same to the motor pool fund, it's just issuing a rebate.
Why don't we just reduce the charges to the departments right now in this budget?
The problem we run into is as long as we are working with contracts such as the state or the county, the accepted terms and conditions or pricing structure.
The rates that you would get reimbursed based on.
Well, that on top of that, but the pricing structure that's accepted by all those groups is the state schedule C. So in lieu of everybody coming up with their own pricing structure, that's the one that's accepted by everybody.
Oh, we don't rebate them back, do we?
No.
No.
Thank you. Any other questions on motor pool? Easy Night, Scott? Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary or Bill, anything else to add before we go to public comment? No? Okay, public comment, comments should be limited to five minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll start with Commissioner Comments, start to my right. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I'd like to thank City Manager Bill Vito, his department heads and staff for excellent evening of educating us. And also, I'd like to thank Public Works Director Scott Komenzey for installing those memory jog, orange pylons behind the cliff doll where the street meets there, runs in with the bike path. I believe that was a safety issue and it seems to really get the people's attention to stay on the east side of the, I mean, the motorists, to stay on the east side of those orange memory joggers. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I just had a question, as long as maybe Scott is still sitting there, it's probably unrelated to the budget, but we talked about painting the streets and I did have it on my list to bring up at some time, when we painted the lines on McClellan Avenue north, or rather, south of Fair, and then we took them off. What is our long-term plan for that?
Well, still what was in the planning process was something similar to that, where you might have a different lane configuration there. But I don't know that anything is set in stone at this point in time. I'm sure it would come back either through the Planning Commission or City Commission at that time.
I guess that would be my question, that it would come back here before something happens, because it seems there were a lot of people upset that we were going to take away some parking places on McClellan.
I think unfortunately, that was one of those where it was partially covered publicly, but not to the extent that it needed to be.
People don't like surprises, so, okay. That's really all I had for tonight.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, just to thank the staff for the great preparation and, you know, the great budget briefing that we had tonight. I think it really shows the people are prepared, they know what they're talking about, and they're able to lay it out, so even we can understand it. Certainly, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank staff also, and I, you know, if we're going over the water and sewer budget, the rates are, you know, we keep increasing the rates, I wish we could do something about that. And I think as Kurt noted, in the past years, he's done studies where we're still a pretty good deal, but it, you know, when we keep raising the rates, at some point, we'll probably still be a good deal, but it, you know, we're, each year, people's bills keep going up and up and up and it's, I'm sure it's a little aggravating to the citizens, but one thing on the wastewater, when they use the reserves for the biosol shed, I think that's exactly what we need to do. We need to, within our budget, build up reserves so we can do things without financing.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No comments this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner St. Ange?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since tomorrow's our last night, going through the calisthenics of formulating this budget and it's kind of a catch-all date, and we get to rehash everything, I do want to revisit the notion of bonded debt again that we've already gone to. I realize we've done this before the process even started. But again, I think, kind of goes back to the very first night in the presentation that the manager and his administration made with regard to some of the long-term potential problems that we run into. And now that I have a better feel for how these projects could be funded, what seems to be of relative importance, how much debt we're actually retiring on average in a year, to revisit the notion of how many projects we're putting out there to do and how they're going to get funded. Because like tonight, for instance, if they're being funded by other revenue streams, if you will, cash reserves, I think that's, to me, it's more attractive than bonding it long-term if you can do it because the citizens have already paid for it. No sense paying for the interest to have, in an ordinary amount of money, in my opinion, sit in a reserve account, really not doing anything. I'd rather see our capital working for us than not working for us. I do understand the notion of reserves, you know, I don't want to start from the beginning, if you will, but I still think it's imperative that we, I'd like to see us touch on it tomorrow, I want to bring it up. And not that we're here, not so we're here till 10 o'clock, but just to refresh the priority and what we think needs to be done now that we've had the privilege of seeing the budget in black and white and not talking about it in abstract terms when we did, when we first did the capital equipment outlay and capital construction outlay process a month or so ago. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing for tonight. City Manager, any comments?
Only to share your praise for our staff. We've got great staff and I thank them all for the hard work they continue to do and for all the presenters for the work they did this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.